Order from Hobbit County Supervisor's meeting this morning at 8:00 a.m. If we'll all rise and have the invocation from Supervisor Bretherton.
Oh heavenly Father, we come before you with grateful hearts again this morning for all of your blessings for this great nation, this great state and county. We thank you, Lord, for these blessings, for every good and perfect gift comes from you, and we ask you again today, Lord, to guide us and direct us, to give us wisdom in all of our decision-making. May we make these decisions in the best interest of those we serve. These things we ask in your name, and we'll give you the praise. Amen.
Amen. And if you'll follow me, then. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have any, anyone signed up to speak to the call of the public? Anyone signed up to speak for the call of the public? There being none, we'll go ahead and go down to item number one, discussion, possible action, authorization of staff to proceed with the settlement measures with Lincoln Financial Group relatives of the voluntary life insurance benefits. Administrator Hendricks, if you'd like to start.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning. Reyesuna and John Timko, Ray, our HR Director, and John Timko, our Finance Manager, has been working on this issue, and I believe they're going to tag team on a short presentation for the board if it serves you.
Let me give you a little background into this Lincoln Life Insurance issue. It came to my attention, I think around last August, and my staff had been working on it since May. What we basically discovered was that many employees, now fifteen or sixteen, had been paying life insurance premiums to Lincoln Life. But because of errors in my benefits decision, there was not life insurance coverage with Lincoln Life. So these employees had been paying various amounts of premiums when they had no life insurance. So over the fall, I met with my staff to get the background, and subsequently I engaged Mr. Timko to assess the problem. Once we had a good grip of the problem, we talked to ECA, Intercolleges and Associates, and the Vice President to see if she could help us with negotiating retroactive coverage for these employees. Unfortunately, Lincoln Life basically told us, in other words, that it was our clerical error, and they were not going to make us whole. So over the winter, we've been discussing it further, and at this point, we're asking the board to give us direction to make these employees whole by giving them a couple of options that they can select from depending on their individual life insurance needs. And Mr. Timko has put together a chart with the math, and I'd like him to kind of pick it up from here on.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again, as Ray pointed out, this was an administrative error. People enrolled at enrollment time when they initially became employees, and through whatever, for whatever reason, they never really got their application sent to the insurance company, although we did begin their payroll deductions. To sort this out, we're now down to fourteen remaining employees, and what we would like to do is offer them an option to either have the Benefit Trust Fund pay the difference between the premiums that we deducted from their paychecks and what it would take to bring the insurance company whole as though they had been providing coverage through this time, or to allow the employee to say, "I really don't need the insurance coverage, just give me back what you deducted from my paycheck that I didn't really have coverage for when you deducted it." Using those two options and calculating for each of the remaining fourteen employees, the potential cost to the Employee Benefit Trust Fund to make everyone whole, if each took the most expensive option, would be $27,000. If everyone chose to have their insurance reinstated, it would only cost $22,000. If everybody said, "Never mind, just give me back my money," it would cost around $18,000. We think this is the best alternative to resolve the problem, and fortunately, we didn't have any, anybody that thought they were covered or had a spouse or dependent covered. Certainly we're fortunate that none of those people needed to call upon that life insurance during the time that we had this problem. So this would solve the remaining fourteen employees, giving them the election to whichever works best for them. To have it funded out of the Employee Benefit Trust Fund, this $27,000 in relation to the $7.1 million balance will be insignificant. Any questions?
I have a question. I'm confused. So it was an administrative error, the deductions were made, where'd the money go?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus, this is a voluntary program that employees can elect to take this extra coverage. When payroll does the deduction, the gross amount that they deduct is sent to Lincoln Life. Lincoln Life sends to the Benefits Department an invoice, which is also a gross amount invoice, and those two numbers never match exactly. They weren't actually being reconciled in the benefits area for several years, and as a result, the differential just continued. There were some other factors at work that made the, made the difference disappear a little bit, and that was that once we started people in an insurance program, once they crossed an age barrier to go to a higher premium, we didn't have any mechanism of catching that either. And so the insurance company did. So they were billing this to higher age bracket for some employees, which made our bill higher, and we were deducting for people that weren't getting coverage, which kind of offset that increase, and so it never really appeared as a growing gross kind of problem. We've since pinned all that down, worked it all through, and need to resolve these final fourteen people.
First of all, it would have been nice to have had some backup on this so we could have at least had an idea what we were talking about today. How long a period has this been going on for?
Don't know when it actually, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, I don't know when it actually began. As far as the backup, it was my understanding that we were going to discuss this in executive session, and we would have had copies for you.
I guess, we have no idea how long it's been going on, we have no idea where the money went. We were sending money, the employees' money, to an organization that obviously doesn't keep any records, and they just take whatever we give them, and I would think the bigger question would be, why are we in business with these people?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Johnson, I was looking at the list here, it looks like the longest term had been, goes back to 2003. And quite frankly, I think the insurance company did their job. We failed to get an application to them when the employee enrolled. They sent us billings that we could have detected that had we been doing reconciliations. The fact that we weren't doing reconciliations makes it our administrative error for not having caught that.
Now, the, Mr. Chairman, the Employee Benefits Trust is a board that's not really controlled by this, this Board of Supervisors. We gave up our authority to EBT, correct?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, you are correct. The Employee Benefit Trust Fund is a separate legal entity. I think Bill will back that up on. They have a board that consists of one member of the Board of Supervisors and others appointed by the supervisors, so they are, to that extent, under the control of this board, but act frankly independently of this board.
I guess, and under that fiduciary responsibility, they don't do audits?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, the fund is audited every year. This voluntary life program is such a small piece of the entire program that it just doesn't catch much attention.
I guess, to me, when you're dealing with, you know, probably the employees that are, that didn't have insurance since 2003 would think that small piece is a pretty large piece, but I guess those are the only questions I have. I mean, I didn't vote to give, give up our authority, EBT, and I think it's another reason why it should be brought back under the board. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Any further questions?
I have some questions, but I think perhaps my question should be asked in executive session.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, anticipating the question, the agenda allows for the board to recess into executive session upon motion and second on any item contained on the agenda. If you intend to do that, let me suggest that you do it in conjunction with item five, which is an executive session for claims and demands, so you can do them all together.
Okay. Would that be fine with you?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We'll have further discussion and clarification then in executive session under item number five.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Item number two, discussion, possible action, approve the appointment of Mr. Robert Price as Risk Manager at the rate of $72,779.20 per annum, effective at the beginning of the next pay period, and approve the employment of immediate family members reporting directly to the Board of Supervisors. Motion for discussion?
Motion to discuss.
Motion and a second. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Open for discussion.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Certainly.
Does this motion contemplate Mr. Prince being classified or unclassified staff?
Mr. Hendricks?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Moss, this motion doesn't address the classification or unclassification of the employee. All this is doing is hiring him at the position that was advertised, which was a classified position.
So it's a classified position if we approve it as presented?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What do we have to do if the board were to decide to make this an unclassified position?
I would have to defer, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Moss, I'd have to defer to Reyesuna. He's been looking into that particular issue.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, and it's part of my backup, when you make a significant change here, reporting relationship being the one, one of the things that we do in HR in terms of maintaining our classification system, and it's in my backup, if you approve this hire, then my backup says that HR will conduct a job audit, because now this position and also the OMB manager report to the board, and we will immediately commence an audit and then come back to the board recommending a new employment status and different job specifications, because this change is significant. You could also just, just clearly give us the direction to proceed with the audit as I suggested in my backup.
I have a question for Mr. Osuna.
Certainly.
If the Risk Manager's job duties do not change, and the same would be with OMB, and it's only the person to whom they report to, why is there a need for a job audit?
Because, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, at this point, I think I need the board's input on the job description as it exists. The essential job functions right now are written in such a way that reflect the former county administrators, county managers' concept of what the essential functions would be. So I would be dealing with the board and Mr. Hendricks to see if you want to review, expand, do whatever you want with the essential job functions, and that's part of the exercise.
As part of the exercise, is it not, is it not possible that we forego the audit, the duties remain the same, and the employee, the Risk Manager, reports directly to the Board of Supervisors as unclassified staff?
That is the board's discretion, but from my standpoint, in terms of this position now being a classified position, I always recommend that we follow procedures, and that's to conduct a job audit. But the board can decide a different approach.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, it's my position that any employee who reports directly to us should be unclassified staff, and I personally would be opposed to appointing anyone who reports directly to us in a classified position. So from my perspective, I think we have two options. One, we leave the job duties exactly the same, change it to an unclassified position, and then we vote to accept or not accept Mr. Prince, or secondly, we table this for a couple weeks until Mr. Osuna can complete his job audit.
Is that a motion?
Those are my, I'm just throwing out my, what my thoughts, my two options.
Mr. Chairman? Supervisor Johnson. Mr. Osuna, sometimes we see, when we do a job application like this, we get like the top three will be given to the board even though there is a recommendation. How many people did you have apply for this position?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Johnson and Supervisors, we had a total of twenty-seven applications. And in the final analysis, after Mr. Hendricks and I picked up the review, after getting direction to do so, we invited three candidates that we felt were the best qualified. Of the three we invited, one did not do well, and the other one did not appear for the interview. So we were left with Mr. Prince, who is now recommended. And as I pointed out in my backup, the option for the board is to consider continuing the recruitment. But basically, we ended up with one candidate that we felt met the qualifications.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Osuna, so we have nobody that interviewed that is in the Risk Management position held somewhere else today?
That, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Johnson, the three we invited, two were from other public agencies, and they are currently Risk Managers. And one did not do very well in the interview, and the other one, we actually extended some time period because she was out of state, but she canceled the morning of the interview.
The other question I would have, I noticed that we put in here, and just to let everybody know, we have the immediate family members, if we do, we have, we'll be waiving that. That has been a problem in the past at the county level with, especially in this position where we had family members, just so everybody's well aware of that when we move ahead. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson.
Yeah, you know, about that family members thing, again, I'm new, and one of the things I was surprised to learn when I, when I started to get to know people is how many people are related who work for the county, husbands, wives, children, nephews, nieces, and, you know, I would assume that by the time this came to us, that all of that was looked at, it's all kosher, legal. Am I correct in that?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Angus, yes, you are, and there's requirements in the merit rules that these employees cannot be any, be in any supervisory capacity over each other and virtually have no impact on each other's job performance. It happens from time to time, often in law enforcement, where you're drawing from a limited pool, where you have related people, and the process always requires it to go before the board for approval.
Right. And I know we had a situation several years ago where unbeknownst to anybody, there was a husband and wife working together in direct supervisory positions, and when that became known, they were just separated. I mean, this, the last board didn't even, you know, make an issue of that, so, you know, like, the Chairman of the Board told me last year that, you know, the county cannot discriminate, even if it's employees. So I looked around, I don't, I don't see any conflict, I don't see any times that their, the decisions or their interactions come together, so I am comfortable with these two people working for the board.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, Mr. Prince, I'm just stating this for the historical record, is currently an employee of the county, is that correct?
Correct.
And his wife is currently the clerk of the board?
Correct.
So I'm changing Mr. Prince from one position to the other doesn't change his employment status, it just changes his job title and duties?
Correct.
Okay. And I say that, I know those answers, I just want to make sure the world at large, who may be listening to those, understands that.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson.
I think Mr. Moss is going to be pretty, pretty stringent on his at-will employ. So my question, Mr. Osuna, would be, is that something then that we need to re-advertise it, because we're talking about a two-week wait, but it's possibly one of the, one of the motions that comes up? Obviously, the people you interviewed didn't realize the job would be at-will. Is that something that looks like you didn't get a lot of people that were qualified if you only interviewed three out of the, or you only interviewed two out of the whole?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Johnson, Supervisors, we started the recruitment, I believe it was November 7th, and as all of you know, things have changed with the board reporting these positions to them. When I talked to these three people, obviously, Mr. Prince knew about the change, but the other two were not aware of the change, but obviously, wanting to pursue employment, they said it was okay. That's what they told me. It is a consideration because we changed the reporting relationship. So I guess that's another issue that the board should consider in either accepting my recommendation or continuing to recruit.
I think you are the, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Certainly.
We should put the cart before the horse, and if this job audit is that critical, we should perhaps have the job audit completed before we vote to hire or not hire someone, and that includes whether we go out for advertisement or don't go out for advertisement. So I would move that we table this until the next board meeting to give Human Resources the opportunity to complete their job audit.
Way of motion?
I have a second for discussion. Second for discussion. The only question I would have would be, would the two weeks be enough time, because he has to do his audit and then get back up to us to, you know, for the next meeting? It's pretty, because our next meeting is two weeks.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I don't even think the job audit's that necessary. I mean, I think we know what the Risk Manager does, he's got a job description. The only thing we're changing is who he reports to and whether they're classified or unclassified. I'm trying to show some deference to staff and their professional opinion on this, and I'm perfectly happy to go the other way, which is to appoint Mr. Prince as Risk Manager as an unclassified position doing the exact same duties. So like I said, we have one or two options, I just threw one of them out there.
Isn't there a motion?
A motion and a second, yes, ma'am.
We have a motion and a second, we are discussing it.
Just to table it.
Table it until the next meeting, until they complete the audit. If that's not meeting with the pleasure of the board, I'd be happy to withdraw my motion. Is that the proper process, is to withdraw my motion?
It would be proper to.
Okay. I withdraw my motion.
We have to draw the motion. We would need to withdraw the second.
I'll withdraw the second.
I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Mr. Prince as the Risk Manager in an unclassified position with all, do I have to read the whole thing or with all?
Would that be performing the same exact job duties?
Performing the same exact duties. The only thing's different is that, as reporting to the board, he becomes an unclassified employee.
My second.
We have a motion and a second then to appoint Mr. Prince then to that position as an unclassified.
May I say something?
Yes.
And then I believe that Mr. Osuna can go ahead and proceed with his, with his audit and report to the, to the board even after we put Mr. Prince in place.
Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Bretherton, board, yes, we can proceed, and the board always has an option at a later date, once you work with the Risk Manager, to reassess the essential job functions that you desire.
Thank you, Mr. Sin. Any further questions? Discussion? Discussion from the audience. Anyone signed up for this item? There being none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No. Item number three, discussion, possible action, establish measurements measurable, attainable, and realistic goals and expectations to enable Risk Management staff to continue to conduct business. Directives should include, but not be limited to, reporting structure, responsibilities, prioritization of duties, and establish a means to keep the board up to date on status of operations and directives of claims or claims. Motion for discussion?
Motion to discuss.
Second. We have a motion and a second for discussion. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you for your motion. Would you care to speak first, or?
Well, we, when we, we approved an organizational chart, and apparently, there is some confusion by some employees that we want to clarify about our reporting structure. And, so I'm leaving it open for that discussion.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Certainly.
I was reading the backup material the other day, and I would like to make a couple comments and then ask one or two questions of staff. My vision, and this is just my vision as one board member of Risk Management and OMB, is that they perform the exact same job they did before, it's only the ultimate body or person, entity that they report to, the Board of Supervisors, that has changed. They would do the exact same job. Considering that they are professionals, I anticipate that when they work in cooperation with the county manager, 99.9% of the agreed-upon projects, conclusions, and things of that nature would remain the same. It's only in the few instances where there is a conflict between the county administrator and the Risk Manager that they would bring that issue to our direct attention for resolution. And that gets to the reason why I thought having a separate employee reporting directly to the board was a good idea. Right now, we have one individual, that's the county administrator, who runs the day-to-day functions of government. I'm not going to say this, I don't mean to be, this is a compliment, Mr. Hendricks, so please take it that way. Essentially, when we're not around, he's king. And since our founding fathers didn't like that concept, they wanted to have multiple eyes and ears and brains on any particular problem. I like the idea that in a very limited sphere, Risk Management and OMB, we have another set of eyes, who will, 99.9% of the time, if they're doing their job, cooperate with the county administrator, and things will go forward just as they have always gone forward. However, in the event there's a problem, a dispute, in the event that one of the three are not doing their job properly, in that event, the system of checks and balances would kick into play, and the board would become aware of it, as opposed to one boss, the county manager, saying, "I am your boss, you will do it, or there's the door." There is no hard trigger that the county administrator or the Risk Manager or OMB could pull in the event of a real problem, and the board would become more aware of that, and the board would be more directly involved, and the board will not receive, I hope, spin as much as it may have or may not have in the past. So that's the whole function here. In my view, the Risk Manager's job doesn't change. In my view, the only change that changes is that the Risk Manager is hired and fired and reports directly to the board, though it works in cooperation with the county administrator, and if and when there's a problem, in those few rare instances there's a problem, that's when we hear about it. And that's when people are on the chopping block at that point, most likely. So that's my, that's my take on the situation.
Thank you very much, Supervisor.
I-
In the line?
I, go ahead.
Supervisor.
I do have a comment to make, too. If, um, whatever we do here today, I think in keeping with what we did, uh, on the risk manager, same should be with, uh, OMB. I think that, uh, however we structure this and whoever he reports to, should, uh, he should be, uh, unclassified also. I think, as we've discussed, anyone reporting directly to the board, uh, should be an unclassified employee. And I think that Mr. Osuna also included that in his backup material to do an audit and proceed with that audit on, in that position also.
Okay, I have something. And to expound on what Supervisor Moss was saying about checks and balances, um, again, not much is, was, is going to change, ninety-nine point nine percent, day-to-day, going through the county administrator. What this does is it gives the other divisions, very important divisions, not only the ability, but the responsibility to bring any issue, any, any, um, dispute to the board, and then if the board wishes, then we can go and have an executive meeting about it. Ultimately, the board of supervisors is in charge, and that is, um, sort of the statement and the vision of that new organizational chart. But again, I think some of the confusion is about the reporting. The day-to-day, still going to go through the county administrator, it's just they have the ability and the responsibility of coming to the board of supervisors if there is an issue, and in that way, as our likes, uh, as Supervisor Moss, Moss said, like our founding fathers, checks and balances, transparency, um, there can, there can never be a bottleneck of information in one place, and that's, to me, that's always a good thing.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, uh, understanding where we're going. The chart that Supervisor Moss drew had a direct line to us from risk management and OMB. So, that, in, in my opinion, that means that the county administrator has no control over our OMB or our risk management. If they're going to report to us, I think then they can cooperate with the county administrator all they want, but they need to be direction coming from us. Anytime you give employees, if we don't have, if they don't have direction, I, I think they're going to, uh, be hesitant to do anything, you know, especially with OMB. I mean, if we want audits done, I think we should say, you know, we have a meeting with them, we say, "These are the audits that we want to see done, we have a timeline to get them done." I, I would much rather have the administrator running those things, but, but if they report to us and we're responsible, I would rather have us in charge of, of them, and I realize we're not on OMB right now, uh, but on, uh, risk management, if we want to look at something, I really don't like, um, being advised after the fact that, "Oh, by the way, we, we went in and investigated this or had a risk problem." That's my only problem. I have no problem if you want to have the, uh, county administrator do these things and report back to us, but if, if we're in charge, I'd like to just be in charge. That, that's my question.
Very good, thank you. And the reason I brought this forth was probably multifaceted. At what point would the board, or the, uh, the person in charge make that report to the board? Uh, what would be the, the tipping block in order to make that report? Who would be the liaison? And if that person was the liaison, say for instance, it was the chairman, my concern was, in any type of communique to the rest of the board, it could be construed as trying to build some type of consensus, and that was my concern. So, I would feel much more comfortable if we were to set up some type of mechanism in which we have a report, uh, either at the first of each meeting in the executive session, and then a regular report during mid-month, in order to be brought forth and brought up to, uh, information on all, all the issues.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Certainly.
Maybe this is best to Mr. Ekstrom or Mr. Hendricks, I'm not sure, but we already have an employee who communicates with the entire board outside of meetings, and my reading of the rules that Mr. Ekstrom, I believe, provided us on the open meeting, um, requirements, is there's no violation if Mr. Hendricks sends an email to all five board members for information purposes, and there's further no, um, violation if one of the board members sees that information and requests Mr. Hendricks to set a meeting on the issue to discuss it publicly. The only time a violation occurs is if the board begins to discuss it outside the meeting amongst themselves, or a quorum of the board starts to do that.
That's correct.
So, when it comes to the risk manager, um, and I'm only using the risk manager for, in this example, because that's what we're talking about, when it comes to the risk manager providing the board information, the risk manager can email all five board members simultaneously, and the only problem is, just like it would be a problem with the county administrator, is if we start talking about it outside of a meeting. If and when a board member thinks there's a serious, uh, I'll give a hypothetical, um, and this again is no slight to Mr. Hendricks, okay? Uh, Mr. County Administrator Smith has allegedly stolen a million dollars, the risk manager could send an email to all five board members and say, "I believe Acting, excuse me, County Administrator Smith has stolen a million dollars and sent it to all five board members," and I'm sure there's going to be five replies to the, um, uh, uh, Chairman, or to whomever it is that sets these meetings, the clerk of the board, uh, "Please set a special meeting immediately," which is the proper, proper process. Because we don't talk about stuff because of information that Mr. Hendricks provides us outside of board meetings, at least not a quorum of us don't, and, uh, I don't suspect that would be the case if our risk manager or OMB manager was to provide us information. When it goes to, um, the reporting process, I think this board wears multiple hats, or the board of supervisors, or the flood board, or the library board, um, or the TV district board, um, and when it comes to our monthly agendas, we would just have, our risk manager and OMB would have the power to put items of concern to them on the agenda, just like the county administrator does, and we would bring it up and discuss it at that time. The risk manager or OMB may or may not decide to exercise that power, um, because there may be, and I anticipate, um, that most of these issues, you know, we have to audit department, that's, the, the community development department, you know, OMB and risk management, um, and, excuse me, risk management and the, um, county administrator would probably understand, since they're both professionals and they're both well aware of what's going on day-to-day, there is a need to audit that department. If there isn't a need, and there's an argument, risk manager wants to audit this department, or OMB wants to audit this depart, uh, one department, and the county administrator wants them to audit another department, I assume that's when they'll bring it back to the board and say, "We have a dispute as to which department we want to audit." And we would listen to both sides and say, "Audit Department X, as opposed to Department Y." I don't think it's that complicated.
No, it's certainly not that complicated. I guess that, that issue is, I wanted to make sure that in either case, whether it would be OMB or the risk management personnel, would have, would be empowered then to be on that agenda, to, to bring an agenda item to, forthwith.
Mr. Chairman, in my view, I think they would absolutely have to be empowered because they're our direct employee, and that's the only way they could, um, uh, in a, a public meeting, um, debate an issue with the county administrator. Not that I expect that would occur with any great frequency, um, but if and when it did occur, that power would be in place.
Okay. Uh, I have a question for, uh, County Attorney Ekstrom. Do we need to then, uh, further, uh, exemplify these actions to empower, uh, risk management or the OMB through their, uh, their job description? Or is this an understood, would it be understood that they would be empowered to bring that, these items to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, board members, I think it's implicit in the, in the motion the board made, and the responsibilities you've given to these individuals, that the board can ask that they report monthly. My, my concern was the question you posed to me, whether you, as chairman, could communicate to the board members, and, and that's to be discouraged because it appears as though it's consensus building. However, the manager, your department heads, those other people can communicate with the board without, uh, violating the open meeting law. Hope it was clear on that. Uh, and right now, I think you've got a, the way it was well articulated, I think, allows you to do what you want to accomplish by having monthly reports or periodic reports from these individuals directly to the board.
Okay.
I think that works.
Then, then I'm satisfied.
Do we need to do anything else on this?
The only other thing I would have, Mr. Chairman, would be that, i- if, if I was the new risk manager or OMB, and, and I'm put at-will, I would be very leery of my job by doing something that, without approval of the board, so I, I would think that they would, might want to make sure that when they're doing audits or doing those things, that they had our approval, because now we're going from before where the board of supervisors had the county manager and the clerk of the board reporting to them, we now have four department heads that report to us, or division heads, or whatever their titles are going to be, that, outside of the realm. So, that's just something that we ought to think about, because if, if I was an employee, and now you have five different personalities to try to make sure you try to keep in line, before you had a, you know, a county manager, county administrator, to kind of be a buffer, he took the heat, now you have two people that, you know, might not want to, um, make decisions without getting our approval.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
I think, I tend to recall a, um, report that Mr. Hepler, um, provided us, or at least provided to the county manager who provided, uh, provided it to us, um, as part of this discussion about the job projects they're currently working on. Um, I don't think having such a report provided to us, I thi- I think that having such a report provided to us on a monthly basis, um, would probably address Mr. Johnson's, um, concerns, and the board actually would have theoretically, not that I expect that we would, but theoretically would have the power to intervene and say, "Pay more attention to Project X, as opposed to Project Y."
Would you then be in favor of having a, a special meeting then, for those reports, each month?
Can't they just be attached to the agenda? The regular agenda?
It can be.
Yeah, I think that's probably the best way of handling it, keep everything consolidated. Um, and my, this is my personal view, is just attach the report. If we have a question, we can call our employee up here and say, "What's going on with this?" And if we don't have a question, we can, "How you doing?", and go about our business.
Okay. Thank you very much for your patience, you've satisfied all my questions and concern. I don't believe there's any further action required for this item, is there? Okay.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, item four is essentially the same item, uh, establishment of measurable, attainable, and realistic goals for, to enable OMB staff to continue to conduct business. Essentially, this is the same questions, uh, the same concerns, so...
I would just say the same things I said over again, so if I can say ditto, Mr. Chairman, I'll say, "See my prior remarks."
All right, okay. I'm pleased with the clarification, I'm, and, so I, I'm fine with it. To that, we'll move to item five, uh, review the pending claims and demands under executive session, also, item, uh, item number one, the Lincoln Financial, and with that, we would require a motion for an executive session.
I move we go into executive session to discuss items one and five.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to, uh, enter into executive session. We have a motion second to enter into executive session.
Okay, we reconvene the meeting. Nothing to report and...
Motion for adjourn.
Motion for adjourn. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for your attendance at today's Board of Supervisor meeting.